It is 5:30 PM and I call to order the December 13th, 2022 meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. May I please have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a student appeal, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and receipt of legal advice regarding IG report.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Please check the motion, Mrs. Nash, to confirm it's correct. Board members, please vote.
Yeah, not verbal.
Okay.
And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we adjourn executive session at 6:37.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And the second was, the motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board, please vote. The motion passes. We will resume the public session. And please just note that Mrs. McFadden is not with us this evening. We will now move on to the inspirational moment. Tonight's inspirational moment is provided by the E.L. Wright Middle School Chorus. Please welcome E.L. Wright.
(Applause). Dr. Davis, Madam Chair, Honorable members, District all dependents, staff, guests, and parents. I am... Taylor. I am the principal at E.L. Wright Middle School, and it is my honor and privilege to present to you this evening a part of our chorus. They had their concert last week. They are an amazing group. And as we enter this season of gratitude and Thanksgiving, I would also like for us to remember a renewing of the mind, renewing of the spirit, and renewing of the heart. And if you listen and look at these young people, you will see the possibilities that exist for our future. At this time, I would like to present the E.L. Wright Chorus under the direction of Mr. Benjamin Refuse.
Wright. I thought you were waiting for another song, or you were prepping for another song. Thank you so much. Let's give them another round of applause. Will you all join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, E.L. Wright Middle School Chorus. And let me just clarify before we begin. Mrs. McFadden was here for executive session but is unable to be with us right now due to a family obligation, is hoping to join us later this evening. Also, I want to apologize to the public for our tardiness this evening. One of our executive session items was receiving legal advice regarding our IG report, and our board was very interested to speak with our attorney as we have new board members, so it was a little bit delayed. Again, we apologize. Now, moving on, may I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp. We are on the board agenda, not the consent agenda.
Never mind.
You can make it to approve the board agenda for tonight's meeting.
I move to approve the board agenda for tonight.
December 13th.
December 13th, 2022.
22th meeting.
22.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, the vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. We will now have a, may now have a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move we amend the minutes from the consent agenda to reflect the start time of the November 29th, 2022 board meeting was 5:30 PM and approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, the vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. We will now have a, may now have a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move we amend the minutes from the consent agenda to reflect the start time of the November 29th, 2022 board meeting was 5:30 PM and approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, the vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. We will now have a, may now have a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move we amend the minutes from the consent agenda to reflect the start time of the November 29th, 2022 board meeting was 5:30 PM and approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, the vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. We will now have a, may now have a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move we amend the minutes from the consent agenda to reflect the start time of the November 29th, 2022 board meeting was 5:30 PM and approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, the vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. We will now have a, may now have a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move we amend the minutes from the consent agenda to reflect the start time of the November 29th, 2022 board meeting was 5:30 PM and approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, the vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. Item 7.1, Public Participation. Before we begin, I will remind our speakers that each person is limited to three minutes and that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to staff to respond at a later time. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Gus Philpott.
Good evening. My name is Gus Philpott. The State Inspector General reported as of June 30th this year, the district had 4,794 In the district highlights, the district reports that there were 3,844 employees. So I'd like for the board to find out what happened to the other 950 that the inspector general counted but the district doesn't. At the first regular meeting of this school board on November 29th, you received an employment recommendation in the private executive session, and then in open meeting, you approved that recommendation without discussion or mention of any name. Recently, the district announced at that meeting, you approved the hiring of Greg Torqueta as the district's new senior chief officer for communications. I was at the November 29th meeting, and I didn't hear his name. What you approved as part of the consent agenda was an unidentified employment recommendation. Was it to offer the job, or was it to approve his hiring? Your approval was to hire Libby Roof's replacement. The district announced that Libby had transitioned to Lexington 1. I have no idea what that means. What happened was she quit, and her new job is at Lexington 1. I think our press releases ought to be clear. Why does a public school district need a person who is a storyteller, who reframes opinions, who has extensive background in digital marketing and media strategy, who has held positions at various television stations in Texas, Florida, Georgia, and in Washington? What are you paying for that? How wide was the choice of candidates? Was the job posted internally? Were current employees invited to apply? Current employees work hard at their jobs, expecting a shot at advancement right here in Richland 2. How many of them were considered for Libby's post? Hasn't there been any management development of employees who would then be able to move up when a position opened? How do you expect to keep good, experienced employees when they realize they will be overlooked and the positions will be filled from the outside? There is no brand at Richland 2. We're not selling houses, cars, clothing, food, or anything else. The school district, a public school district, has no competition. Well, except for private schools, charter schools, and home schools. If it provided a quality education and a solid, safe environment, it wouldn't even have that competition. As trustees, you're running a business. This is a $1 billion business in assets and a $300 million annual budget business. Did any of you ask in executive session how many internal candidates were considered for Libby's job?
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Our next speaker is David Oberly.
Okay, let's wait for my sound start. Hey, good evening, everybody. A couple of things I wanted to bring up tonight. Last board meeting, I don't remember which board member mentioned this, but one of y'all mentioned the SOAR program, which I think has been done over the last two years. And the impression I got was that it was going to continue. I don't know if that's the case or not, but I'll tell you, as a parent of a child who attended SOAR, it was a great thing. I mean, y'all remember my fight, I kept fighting to get my girls back at school because my one daughter in particular needed to be in front of a teacher, and once she got back from a teacher, she did a lot better. And the SOAR program was, was great for her. So if that is something that's on the table for, for this coming sunder, that summer, that'd be great. I definitely would ask for that if it can be done. So that's one thing I want to talk about. The other is, I know prior to, I'll say maybe six months, eight months or so ago, any person in the world actually could log on to see what book titles were in the school libraries. It's now become where only if you're a parent, you can do that. I think if you're asking taxpayers to buy these books, they should be able to see what books are being stocked in libraries. I think it's only fair to do that. I don't see what harm comes from the general public seeing book titles. They're not going into the libraries. They just want to log on their computer, see what books are in the library. And there are books out there that may be a little inappropriate for certain age groups. And so I think if someone who's paying for the books, they ought to have the right to be able to see those book titles. The last thing is, I'll say this, and it's a good thing that there's no audio coming from this thing because you'd hear a loud uproar. But if there's something that could be done from y'all's, I knew, a lot of y'all spoke about teacher, teachers want to be able to have a voice and everything, and a lot of teachers are kind of afraid that they can do that, you know, without fear or anything. If teachers could just go in and teach, all they had to do is teach. Right now, they're applauding right now. Because that's what they want to do. They want to just go in and teach. They don't want to have to be committee after committee after committee and all this other stuff they got to do. They just want to teach. My dad was one of the most decorated math teachers districts ever known. What drove him from the classroom to go only into teaching universities? All the paperwork he had to do, all the nonsense he had to do. He said, "I'm done with it. I want to just teach." He was a math teacher. He didn't care how you got the math problem done. If it worked, he didn't care. That's great. But nowadays, like I can't even tutor anymore because if you don't do it the way the school tells you how to do it, it doesn't count. And he didn't, he didn't see it that way. He's like, "If you got the right answer, that's, that's great." So if there's anything that could be done, I don't know how much this is state-driven, federal-driven, I don't know. But I guarantee you, there's a lot of teachers right now applauding the idea of just going to the classroom and teaching. That's all they want to do. They want to teach. They don't want to do all this other nonsense. So if there's anything y'all can do about that, I know they'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oberly. Moving on, the board will now vote on executive session items. Student appeals, may I please have a motion regarding the student appeal?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I'd like to make a motion that we hear the student appeal in person. For tonight.
Is there a second for student number one?
Second.
The motion was made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Dr. Washington. Is there any discussion? And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. And the vote is five yes, one abstention, and one not present. The motion carries. Item 7.2, Employment Recommendation and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. The motion carries. Item 7.2, Employment Recommendation and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. The motion carries. Moving on to new business, no action requested. Item 8.1. Dr. Davis, will you share the Richland 2 highlights, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, to our community that is present with us today, good evening. To those of you who are at home viewing us, good evening to you as well. It's mine and a privilege to share the district highlights, which are organized around the four core values of learning, character, community, and joy. And so as always, we will begin with learning. Longleaf Middle School is being rewarded for its commitment to expanding access to computer science for all students. Code.org has selected Longleaf Middle School to receive $10,000 from the CES Leadership Prize to continue providing students with opportunities to learn computer science as part of their core K-12 education, especially students from underserved communities. Longleaf is one of two schools in South Carolina selected to win the cash prize. Nicole LaSmiling, a computer science teacher at Longleaf, applied for the award and will receive a no-cost scholarship to attend Code.org's professional learning program in the summer. The online application process for Richland 2 Choice got underway this week. Parents and students have until Wednesday, January 25th, at 5:00 PM to apply. Richland 2 Choice includes Magnet, Expanded Choice, and the R2E School. Applications for the Richland 2 Center for Child Development 4K Program will be available February 1st. Space will be limited. Parents who are interested in applying should start formalizing, familiarizing themselves with the application process now. Learn more and apply for Choice and the Child Development Program at richland2.org. The character portion of the report highlights the December rookie teacher of the block. Arianna Brown, second grade teacher at Lonnie B. Nelson Elementary, is the district, is the December rookie teacher of the block. She was nominated by Principal Twanisha Gardner for providing an innovative classroom environment by setting clear expectations for all her students. Dr. Gardner said that her nomination, Ms. Brown develops, she develops positive character traits by being a model for students, demonstrating their expectations for classroom, hallways, playground, and cafeteria behavior at all times. Brown is known, frequently recognized, positive character traits, and starts conversations with parents with a positive statement about students. The district partner, H&R Block, sponsors this award, and each month, a new teacher is chosen, and then an overall winner is selected as Rookie Teacher of the Year. Winners receive a plaque to hang outside their door, discounted tax preparations from H&R Block, and other valuable goodies. In the area of community, early bird registration is now open for the Premier 100 Conference. $30 to cover your registration through January 15th, and after that, the cost for participants is $40. The Premier 100 Conference will be Friday, February 10th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and Saturday, February 11th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Friday night's keynote speaker is Principal Caffele, a highly regarded urban educator, master teacher, and transformational school leader from New Jersey. The Premier 100 Conference serves as an answer to the call of strategically recruiting and retaining minority male teachers. Less than 2% of teachers nationwide are minority males, and this is a public event which is open to all. And now for some joy. Jackson Creek Elementary School Principal Dr. Sabina Maslow-Taylor is adding two more awards to her resume. The South Carolina Early Childhood Association recently announced Dr. Maslow-Taylor will receive the Kevin Swick Family and School Community Partnership Award that comes with a check for $250 and a certificate. She will also receive the honorary Jean Green Administrators Award for her work with children and families throughout her career. Kevin Swick was a professor of early childhood education in the Department of Instruction and Teaching Education at the University of South Carolina Columbia. He encouraged Dr. Maslow-Taylor to pursue a doctorate in early childhood education. Both awards will be presented at the SCECA conference being held in Myrtle Beach from February 2nd through the 4th. As you may remember, last month, the American Consortium for Equity in Education named Dr. Maslow-Taylor as a champion of equity in their school leadership award category. And finally, Andrea Dickey of Richland Northeast High School, Pam Bruni of Kelly Mill Middle School, and Stephen Bidwell of Bridge Creek Elementary School were among 27 educators in the first graduating class of the South Carolina Financial Literacy Master's Teachers Program. Congratulations to all. Congratulations to all of our awardees and recipients.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there, board members, are there any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I have a few questions.
Mrs. Washington.
Um, this is a question for Dr. Davis. Can you tell me if the Premier 100 Conference is free for Richland Two teachers?
Um, it is not free for Richland Two teachers.
Okay. And then I also have another question regarding the program. Is this program partnered with the nationally recognized Call Me Mister program? Is there any work done between the two of those programs?
We work within Call Me Mister program, but this, this conference is not a part, it's not a partnership within the Call Me Mister program. But we do work with the Call Me Mister program. Um, we invite those gentlemen who are, um, in the Call Me Mister programs at several of the schools from around the state to Richland School District to kind of give them an orientation of what our school district is like. Um, and we provide them with information and opportunity to tour our schools. We do a get on the bus tour with them as well, taking them around to different schools. Um, but we don't have a, uh, they're not formally a part of the, of this conference. They can attend, however, and probably many of them will.
Any more questions, board members?
Madam Chair, I did have one question. So there is a cost for the conference. Um, where, the proceeds from that, where does, where does that money go?
The proceeds for the, for the conference, for one, we will of course pay, uh, the keynote speaker and presenter um, as part of that, uh, as part of the registration fee. Uh, any leftover money will be used for the Premier 100 Program um, that we will be able to then, um, provide professional development opportunities for, um, for our teachers. And as you recall, the Premier 100, any professional development that we offer is now open to all, is open to all teachers, regardless if they're a part of the Premier 100 or not.
Mrs. Nash, are you, any more questions or you're, you're good?
That's all. Thank you.
Any board members, more questions? Thank you. Moving on to item eight point two, the 2021, 2022 assessment results for elementary and middle schools. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, if you've been briefed, um, we will provide you this month, um, the 21, 22 South Carolina Ready SC Pass Assessment Updates as relates to elementary schools and, uh, middle, and middle schools. Um, and then in January, we'll come back with another presentation for high schools. And so at this time, I turn it over to our Executive Director for Research and Evaluation, Dr. Jennifer Coleman. Dr. Coleman.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis. I'm here tonight to present the results of the 21, 22 SC Ready SC Pass Assessment. So when we stood here last year and I shared with the board the res, uh, assessment results from 2021, the last thought that I left with that board was, let's not get pandemic amnesia. Because what we do know is it's going to take us years and years to recover from the academic losses that children experienced during the pandemic. And, and we had big hopes this year. Um, just a real quick refresher of, of what our past few years have looked like in public education. In March of 2020, the governor closed school for two weeks, and I just remember us thinking, oh my gosh, I can't believe we're going to miss two weeks of school. Little did we know how that would end up, um, being that the governor closed schools for the duration of that year. Then in 2021, when we opened, um, most districts were virtual for a short period of time, then transitioned to a parental choice of virtual or in-person. And we know based on the results we looked at two years ago or last year, that that had a big impact on kids too, depending whether they were back face to face or whether they were virtual for that, uh, 2021 year. Well, then 2022 rolled around and we were excited. We thought for sure this was going to be our normal year, and we were ready, right? As it turned out, 2020, 21, 22 was anything but a normal year for us. And I think if you talk with any teacher who taught in a classroom last year, they'll be glad to share that same sentiment with you, that it actually was probably one of the hardest years of the pandemic for our teachers and our administrators. And if you talk with them, you'll, you'll hear things like, we were waiting for the other shoe to drop. It was a revolving door. And so we didn't quite get that normal year that we had hoped for in 21, 22. So why is that? This is a screenshot of the COVID dashboard that Richland Two was required to create by DEHEC last school year. Um, this was a collaboration between nursing services, communications, and the research team. This was updated daily. Um, this was a big part of my life last year. Um, and, and I really kind of want to start this off just as a reminder. I never want to forget what this year was like because it was hard. And this is a great visual to show why it was so hard. Um, this chart shows the entire school year last year. For the entire year, we had 10,000 different isolations. And those isolations, depending on what part of the school year we were in, were either 10 days or five days. So you can do that math in your head and see the number of days that were missed due to isolation, uh, I'm sorry, quarantines. And the quarantines were exposures to COVID. We also then had 5,600 cases of COVID in our school system last year. And again, depending on the time of the year, per DEHEC's guidelines, those individuals missed either 10 or five days. So you can kind of see, we'd, we'd have this kind of lull and we'd be like, all right, this is it. We're getting back to normal. Then Christmas hit and we had this big spike. So we really kind of lived in, um, a very revolving door kind of instructional environment in 21, 22. And I really want to set that, that premise for you all before we actually discuss the scores. By nature, I'm a pretty skeptical person. And I spent a better part of, of the last school year telling my supervisor, uh, Ms. Gregory, I don't think this is going to be good. These kids are in and out too much. It's, it's going to be really hard for us to have that rebound that we were hoping for. Um, and that's, so I kind of want to set that stage for you as we get into actually looking at the score. So let's talk a little bit about SC Ready itself as an assessment. This assessment is required. It's both state mandated under the Education Accountability Act, but it's also federally required under ESSA. And we are required to test all students in grades three through eight in both ELA, which is reading and writing, and in math. Science, we are only required to test students in grades four and six. And South Carolina has got a history, for any of you who've been around a while, we used to give all kids science and all kids social studies. And there were a lot of debates about the reduction of testing. And so this is where the state landed, and I will say the state did a good job in trying to reduce that mandatory testing. Federal law only requires us to test kids twice in science while they're in elementary and middle school, which is why the state has four and six. And the federal law actually does not require children in elementary and middle school to have a social studies assessment, which is why you don't see it for the state. And when I said all students, I meant all students. Um, because even our severely cognitively disabled students are required to take a test called SC ALT. And it is a version that is, um, altered. It's not the same version that a general education student would get, but we are required by federal law to test every single student who is in our building. So 21, 22 was the sixth administration of SC Ready. It's still a relatively new test. Um, it was developed to assess South Carolina standards. So this is not a test you'll see in other states. This test was developed for our standards by our state for South Carolina students. And in 21, 22, Richland Two had a paper administration of this assessment. There's both paper and online available. But we chose to give, and it was approved by the State Department to give paper in all grade levels. And when you talk about SC Ready, there are four different levels that a student can receive. They can be does not meets, they can be approaches, meets, or exceeds. So all students will get one of those four scores on each of the assessments that they take. Now tonight we'll have, um, you know, between a 15, 20 minute conversation about these test scores, but I want to assure you, this is really a fraction of the conversations that have occurred around this data. We have, um, had more conversations than I could even begin to quantify since we received this data in July. And when you look at a data set this large, that impacts this many of our students, looking at all of third through eighth grade, we look at this data in a lot of different ways. You'll notice in our press release, we did mimic the state's press release, and we reported out on students that were in the meets and exceeds category. But when we also look internally, we look at it, we look at all of the categories. And for this evening, I'll be presenting to you the approaches and above. And I'd like to give you an explanation about my philosophy, about why that's critically important if we as a district are going to move all students in this district. So first of all, let's talk a little bit about our state test because one thing that a lot of people don't know is in the education field, South Carolina is known to have one of the most rigorous state assessments in the nation. And that is because we have one of the most rigorous sets of standards in the nation. You ask any teacher who's teaching social studies or history, and they will tell you, we got a lot of standards, and they are deep. Um, so our assessment is traditionally one that's very difficult. This is actually a sentiment we hear a lot from our military families when they move in from other states because it is, it's a different level of rigor with our instruction, with our assessments. So I want to kind of give you, um, just a little glimpse into those four categories that you can score on SC Ready. So what I have on the screen is a correlation to MAP. Now MAP is another assessment that we give in the district. It's a national assessment. This one was built for the whole United States. And because it's not a criterion reference test like SC Ready is, it's a nationally normed test because it's given to students, millions of students all over the US, it has what we call a national percentile. So I'm going to bring you back to that Stats 101 class that nobody wanted to take in school, okay? A reminder of what a national percentile is. So when you say a student score is at a percentile, that's telling you they did as good or better than that percent of the students nationally in that grade level on that subject area. So to the question, why do I include approaches when I have this presentation for this body? Again, we look at it every different way we can. When you look at the correlation between SC Ready and MAP, and a correlation tells you, how do these two things travel? Do they travel the same? Do they travel differently? Do they travel in a positive direction? One thing we know is that there is a very high correlation between MAP and SC Ready. And when you look at those categories, so you're thinking about kids scored on MAP, and then they scored these levels on Ready. Kids who are scoring does not meet on SC Ready are somewhere between the first and 35th percentile. That feels about right, right? We're looking at that lower quadrant of that assessment. That is our lowest level of kids scoring. When we look at that approaches category, which by the way, on a scale, if we were looking at the scale scores from SC Ready, approaches is the biggest category. Exceeds is a little tiny sliver up here. Met is a little bit of a bigger sliver. Not met's a sliver, but approaches is actually one of the largest categories in the middle of that scale. And you can see why that is. It really encompasses, depending on which grade level you're looking at, you could be anywhere from the 23rd percentile to the 68th. So let's think about what that means. You could actually score approaches on SC Ready and be at the 68th percentile. So back to our Stats 101 class we just had. If you're at the 68th percentile, you did as good or better than 68% of the kids who took that assessment nationally. That's above the national average. Again, just kind of to give some, um, comparison again about the rigor of our assessment and why we look, that we've got to look at all of these different levels when we're doing our analysis, um, internally. So you'll notice on this slide, the percentiles seem to overlap in the categories. I was trying to condense it for the brevity of the presentation, but I'm just going to give you a little bit of a glimpse. This is looking at the MAP assessment, um, for reading by grade level. So you can see that it changes between grade level. Um, also gives you a little bit of insight about how this assessment is a little bit harder at different grade levels, which also mimics our state test as well. But again, if you're a fifth grader, you are at the 68th percentile. That means you did as good or better than 68% of the fifth graders nationwide. That's, that's a pretty doggone good score. Even though you're still going to be in that approaches category on our state assessment. So it's really important that we look at, at, at all of the different ways. When we're, when we're thinking about ways that we can instructionally move our kids, here's the other thing that I want to say about this as well. If we only are looking at meets and exceeds, it is absolutely statistically possible to increase the percent of students in meets and exceeds, and also increase the students in does not meets. I can't put my head on my pillow at night and do that. Because then what we're doing is we're parting this water. Remember I talked about how big that approaches category is? Now you guys know, some of you have been educators. You've probably heard that we, if you look at those bubble kids, I'm not a big fan of that word, but if you look at those bubble kids, and those are those kids that were in that top part of approaches, you can probably push them in. And, and that's probably a true statement. I don't like the term. The reverse is also true. If you've got a kid who's at that lower end of approaches, they could just as easily fall into does not meets. So this is one of the reasons that we don't box ourselves into looking at just one or two categories. We're looking at all of these categories. Because just as it is important that we increase students in meets and exceeds, we're not careful. We could do that and see an increase in does not meets simultaneously, and I don't want that to happen, not for our students. I don't. Okay, so let's jump into our scores. So, um, just to kind of walk you through how I lay out my data, um, because this all makes perfect sense to me. I live, breathe, eat, and sleep this stuff. Um, you're going to see five years on this chart. You'll notice that in 2020, there's a CB. That was a COVID year. There was no state testing given that year. That was the year we were shut down. Nobody was in the building. Um, we were learning virtually, and there was not a secure method to administer the state assessment. So there are five years of data. This slide in particular looks at the scores for Richland Two for ELA. And I like to look at data two ways. I like to look at a two-year change column and a five-year change column because we don't want to start making sure we're celebrating too much for a two-year increase if we also are not making movement across multiple years. So when you look at our percentage of students approaches, meets, and exceeds, you can see that in 21, 22, we were able to increase our, that percent of students in five of the sixth grade levels that we tested. We did have a drop in seventh grade. And when you look at our five-year change, you can see that we also had an increase in five of the sixth grade levels with a drop in, um, third grade ELA. I listened to a really excellent webinar yesterday, um, from NWA actually, that talked about rebound versus recovery. And I, I really like those terms because I think when you look at two-year changes, you're talking about rebound. Have we started to rebound from the pandemic? And when you look at the five-year change column, then you're talking about recovery. Because are we where we were before this whole thing started? And I think when we look at our ELA slide, although it's not unanimous across all grade levels, we can say that we have started the rebound and also started the recovery. That's a big deal. I'm really proud of that. Especially given the constraints that we had. And that goes directly to our teachers. You can read every research book in the world. The number one thing that impacts student achievement is a high-quality teacher in every single classroom. And given the constraints that our teachers had last year, this needs to be celebrated. Not only did we rebound, but we have recovered almost, not all grade levels, but we won't get there, um, when it comes to our ELA scores last year. So always want to look at the state as well because you need to make sure that you're looking at how you compare to the state overall. And you can see the state had a somewhat similar trend for ELA of the rebound and the beginnings of recovery. Now theirs was not as, as high as ours was for ELA, but it was, it's good news overall for the students in the state of South Carolina that when it comes to ELA, we're seeing rebound and we're seeing recovery. And that's a testament to the teachers in this state. Now, if we go to math, the great news in math, we're seeing rebound. We see it in every single grade level when we're looking at the percent of students who were approaches, meets, and exceeds. Now have we hit recovery in math? No, we have not. And we know that last year, when we discussed our scores nationally, the research has become more clear that for this age group of kids in particular, that math just got hit hard. Math got hit hard during the pandemic. Um, for those of you that have been educators, you know why. Um, it's really hard to teach math virtually, especially for itty bitties, right? And I don't think, even as the mom of a kid who wasn't itty bitty at the beginning of this thing, and I have cut more base 10 blocks than I care to admit during the pandemic so we would have something to touch, but you have to touch math. And even as somebody who's got a degree in math, I don't think I realized that until we started seeing nationally the scores that were coming in. So the good news when we look at Richland Two and our math scores last year in three through eight is we have rebounded, but we are still working on the recovery part. What I find interesting is you see some similar trends when you look at the state. What I find interesting is you see some similar trends when you look at the state. The state has also experienced that rebound and they are having, they've experienced a little more recovery than we have, except with those lower grade levels. But we're going to get there. We know that math was really impacted during the pandemic for this band of children, more than the other subject areas. So let's move on to SC Pass. So, thank you so much, sir. SC Pass is administered in grades four and eight for the reasons I mentioned earlier. And that is the minimum that's allowed by federal law. We are required to test them twice in elementary and middle school in science. So when we look at a five-year trend, again, looking at the percent of students who were approaches, meets and exceeds, you can see that we did have rebound. We had increases in our science scores between 21 and 22. And we're edging close to recovery in sixth grade, but not so much fourth grade. But we are keenly aware. We know that science, again, one of those things that you've got to touch. We're still making up some ground from what our kids lost. We're going to get there, but we know that we're still making those changes. Again, if you were to look at, too, the state, they're in a very similar boat when it comes to this, that they did have increases between 21 and 22, but we're not quite where we were pre-pandemic yet. And again, I just, I really just think we would be remiss not to consider that 2122 was not a normal school year. It was far from it. And we were still able to have gains such as these. It's a big deal and it's a big deal and kudos need to go to our teachers for the hard work that they did last year. Now we're going to transition to the most important part, which is what is our academic response to this?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis. I'm Nancy Gregory, Richland 2's Chief Instructional Officer.
And good evening, I'm Katania Davis, Chief Special Education Officer.
And along with our colleagues, we have Mr. Arthur Newton, who's the Executive Director of Elementary Instruction, and Mrs. Penny Atkinson, who is the Executive Director of Secondary Instruction. We would like to present some of the district's strategies and actions in response to the data Dr. Coleman just shared. I will begin with general ed for the district overall. Most of our actions fall into three categories. We like to use the acronym, and you know in education, we love acronyms. AT and T. A stands for alignment, teaching to the intent of the state's standards. T, teaching strategies, using best practices grounded in research. And the second T is for time. Maximizing time and addressing the loss of instructional time due to the pandemic. In our first bullet, we have conducted school data conversations with each school and center this year around their achievement data. Our first data meetings of the year were in the fall. Meetings were based around each school's SMART goals, data trends and patterns, actions, and where schools needed district support. Follow-up meetings to monitor progress will occur in the winter and spring. For bullet number two, we continued our commitment to common district practices. We believe that common district practices implemented consistently across the system provide high expectations for all students. Examples include our instructional model, expectations for learning and standards alignment. On the third bullet, we continued the district's formative assessment system district-wide with benchmark reviews following each benchmark. Last year, we finished expanding the system to all schools district-wide from grade three to high school in tested grades and content areas. In a recent study by Dr. Jennifer Coleman, she noted there was a significant correlation between our benchmark results and student achievement and state assessments. Note that it's really about using the data to inform instruction, assessing for learning, providing data on where teachers need to reteach, differentiate, or form small groups in regards to the standards. It's not just about the benchmark. Lastly, we provided extended learning opportunities for students to address the loss of instructional time. We employed a variety of strategies, whether it was through our summer program SOAR, which you've heard about several times, Extended Learning Day after school, or tutoring services, which is the last bullet. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Newton, who will share with you the elementary.
Good evening, Madam Chair, other distinguished board, board members and Dr. Davis. My first bullet here, each year, we conduct annual schedule audits. As previously stated, AT and T is a common acronym that reminds us of best practices. And this actually focuses on the second T, time. Each year, we audit classroom schedules. Our team checks elementary teachers' daily schedules to ensure that the appropriate amount of instructional time is dedicated to each content area. We follow up with regular classroom observations and support. Second bullet here, the science of teaching and reading. To ensure that we are on the cutting edge of best practices, professional development has been provided for all of our literacy coaches and ELA content specialists, who then train our teachers in the science of teaching and reading. Prior to the science of teaching and reading becoming a popular phrase, we were already utilizing Open Core in grades K through 2, which is grounded in this research. The science of teaching and reading is about the systematic ways of teaching and reading with the focus on phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding words, word recognition, fluency and comprehension. Thirdly here, summer reading camp. We continue to provide five weeks' summer reading camp for third grade students that qualify to attend. Students were immersed in literacy instruction for approximately five hours per day, four days a week. During the camp, students also participated in enrichment activities that focused on literacy and were given books for their home library. To maximize instructional time and accelerate the learning as much as possible, the student-teacher ratio was 15 to 2, as recommended by the State Department of Education. Students receive intensive literacy instruction from teachers and additional support from certified interventionists. Big Ideas Math. We continue to provide professional development during the summer and during the school year to ensure that the curriculum is being implemented with fidelity. This is our first normal year of implementation. As this curriculum was initially implemented during COVID virtually. And last school year, we had a great deal of interruptions due to COVID. Necessary adjustments have been made to the, to our curriculum guides and pacing guides to ensure that implementation of each component of the curriculum as each component is connected and builds upon each other. And lastly, Houghton Mifflin Hardcore 3 through 5 ELA curriculum. This is our first year implementing this new curriculum that is also grounded in the science of teaching and reading. It has been 10 years since the State Department of Education has provided school districts with an opportunity to adopt new ELA curriculum. Therefore, we have used ESSER funds to make this a necessary purchase. Teachers have received training during the summer and ongoing training throughout this school year. Literacy coaches model lessons and provide support as needed to our teachers. At this time, Ms. Atkinson will talk about middle school actions.
Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Davis, as Mr. Newton alluded, I'm going to share with you what is going on in our middle schools in response to the academic achievement data that Dr. Coleman shared. As you will notice, the first bullet here addresses focused, we are providing focused professional learning for seventh grade math teachers. If you remember to the, think back to the data that Dr. Coleman shared, of course, our seventh grade math has not rebounded like some of our other areas. We had a meeting with our middle school principals after we received this data. And along with Ms. Gregory and myself, we decided to make a additional focus with our seventh grade math teachers. And our middle-level math content specialist is providing three additional half-day opportunities around seventh grade math. And you may be thinking, why have we not rebounded in seventh grade math like we have sixth and eighth grade math? The seventh grade math test is 70% of the questions are written at a DOK 2 level. 30% leaves DOK Level 1 questions, which are more your simple math computation questions, and then a few DOK 3-type questions. So Ms. Meldrum, our middle school content specialist, is actually previewing these standards that our seventh grade math teachers are teaching each quarter to make sure they understand the intent of the standards that they are going to be teaching our students in the upcoming grading period. We just had our first intense professional learning opportunity several weeks ago and we received very positive feedback from our teachers. Our second bullet that you see here is Providing Theory to Practice: Unleashing Students' Mathematical Potential. We are in our second group of teachers that are going through our Theory to Practice opportunity. We begin this opportunity each August and we meet with these teachers once a month for a half of a school day. Our high school math content specialists, along with our middle school content math specialists, provide best practices grounded in research, the theory portion for half of the day. Then each teacher has a scheduled observation with one of the math content specialists. And then it is followed up with that all-important coaching conversation. What did the math content specialists observe during that classroom observation? And there is a lot of conversation between the depth of the lesson that was planned and that was carried out. So there is immediate teaching of theory, there is an observation, and then there is immediate feedback. So the teachers are still continuing to learn in between the theory session and the second session. This started out, our first cohort, we really focused on our teachers in algebra in eighth and ninth grade. This year, as I mentioned, we are in our second cohort. We expanded it to all of our middle school math teachers and continuing to encourage our high school algebra teachers to enroll. Last year, we had around 20 teachers. This year, I believe we have 24 teachers enrolled in Theory to Practice. Our third bullet, we are continuing to provide the Homegrown Writing Institute each summer for our English Language Arts teachers. We now have a writing curriculum, Lucy Calkins Homegrown Institute, that is implemented from kindergarten through eighth grade. So we have a continuum of expectations when we are talking about the science of teaching and writing. So that is continuing, continuing to be offered to our middle school ELA teachers. And it is a very intense week with experts in the field of writing. Our last bullet, Mr. Newton has already alluded to. We adopted Big Ideas Math curriculum as we were in the emergency closing. Our teachers had already begun that process of giving us feedback on which math curriculum they felt like was best for our students. We concluded that decision in the midst of the pandemic, in the midst of the emergency closure. And as Mr. Newton shared, we beginning, we began the implementation of that during the 2021 school year. And remember, we started off virtually that year. We did offer PD virtually during that summer and throughout that school year. We continue each August and October on District Professional Development Days to bring in the Big Ideas team to provide learning opportunities for our students. Big Ideas also provides monthly professional learning in a virtual format. And both of our content specialists continue to share those opportunities with our math teachers in discussion, in department leaders meeting, and in our monthly newsletter. So again, that is a journey that we are on and will continue to be on and that we believe is going to make a positive impact.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis. In addition to the strategies that have been shared for all students that, I'm sorry, there we go. Have access to in general education, the special education team has added a few layers to address the unique needs of our over 30, almost 3,900 students with disabilities. The first bullet there is about streamlining our curriculum. Those of you who've been educators know that we love to collect things. And over time, we had collected a lot of different curriculums. So we spent some time doing the research, looking at what we had available, and made some decisions to reduce and create a more streamlined matrix. And this was done to improve the monitoring and training along with the implementation of the specialized curriculum. We reduced the number of instructional resources used by our teachers. This has allowed us to target training and to ensure that we fully utilize the materials as intended for academic intervention. The next bullet I'm really excited about, because this was really a partnership between general ed and special ed, is we have introduced the Orton-Gillingham Method of Teaching Reading. And for those of you who, who are involved in education and parents who have students with disabilities, Orton-Gillingham, or OG as we call it, is the gold standard for explicitly teaching reading because it makes the connections between letters and sounds for struggling readers. It combines multisensory teaching strategies with lessons focused on phonics. It is very effective for students with the learning disability of dyslexia. And we're excited that this strategy is not only being used in special education, but it is also a part of intervention in our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support. And it's also being introduced in some of our early elementary classrooms. Our third bullet, we were able to increase our instructional coaches, which is critical for our first, second, and this year, because of the increase, our third-year teachers, which is critical to early career teachers. And so we've gone from one to four. And so this really is important to maintaining high-quality teachers in Richland 2 long-term in every classroom. And now that we have those teachers that are instructional coaches with expertise in special ed, they're able to provide model best practice. They're able to work with the teachers on how to implement the specialized curriculum. They're doing model teaching. They're showing the teachers how to collect data and use that as a part of the intervention process. And they're also able to do that real-time, on-the-job training with them modeling. And finally, we're bringing in some consultants. We talked about streamlining that curriculum and because we've done that, we're going to be able to do some on-the-job training with some consultants who will come in from the curriculum companies and work with our teachers on the implementation of the curriculum. And they will make, ensure that we are actually implementing with fidelity. And hopefully, this will allow our teachers to make some adjustment in their practice immediately. We hope this has given you a snapshot of not only our data by Dr. Coleman, but also by the academics team as we have implemented countless strategies as we work to address academic achievement in the district. Are there any questions for the team? Thank you.
Thank you all for the presentations. Board members, comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I do have just a few questions. And I'm not sure, should I ask one or two and then you move to the next person? Because I have like four or five, so should I just do one or two?
Yeah, do, do three and then we'll move.
Okay, absolutely. The first question, just, I think, Jennifer, I think you may be able to answer this, just, just quickly. Why are we still doing paper instead of online? And the reason why I'm asking that is many of our exams statewide will be online. So it seems like we will be getting our students ready to know how to take online testing. And just with, looking at the numbers from the State Department, we are just a few school districts that's still doing paper. And I know that we are premier. So I'm just wondering, why are we still taking paper?
Sure, fair question. Actually, two years ago, our elementary school students were testing on computers and had been for many years. One of the recommendations as we were coming out of the pandemic and really still watching how much, especially elementary students struggle to type. One thing you have to remember is, for the itty, for the little bits, for the little kids, there is nowhere built into the standards that they have to learn keyboarding. So that time really is not built into the day. Now, teachers do incorporate it into their lessons, but our fear, going into 2122, we really needed to see what kids knew, flat out. We needed a very solid metric of what do they know, what do they not know? We really felt that utilizing paper in 2122 was going to at least remove that confounding variable of computer skills when we were looking at those scores. Now, having said that, our kids do take assessments in a multitude of formats. The benchmarks are electronic, the MAP assessment is a The benchmarks are electronic, the MAP assessment is electronic, so they are getting that exposure. But we felt it was really important for this year, this past year, we, I didn't want to measure how poorly a third grader can type. So I think ironically though, Dr. Scott, and it's very funny you ask that, the state board met today looking at waivers, and there's been an increase in school districts asking to revert to paper. And I believe that we all have this same sentiment right now, that we really have to get a good measure of what kids do and don't know. I don't think this is going to be an option for a whole lot longer, if I'm being very honest with you. We've seen the RFP for the new state assessment. It does not appear there's going to be a paper option, with the exception of students with disabilities. And so at some point, we will have to do that, but we felt very strongly that this past year of all years, I had a third grader last year, and we'd sit down to do homework, and I have videos of it, and it was a lot of this. Okay? I wanted to know what she knew. She's a beautiful writer. So we made that decision for last year. Good question, though.
Thank you for that, because that's what I know, that they're going to phase out the paper.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why I wanted to ask that question.
Yes, ma'am.
The other question is, Mr. Newton, you talked about third-grade students being able to attend the summer camps, and it's only if they are qualified to attend. But I think my concern with that is, what if that student is just right on the bubble, as Jennifer doesn't like for us to say, on the bubble, and probably should be in that summer camp, but can't because they just didn't qualify, they made that score one above where they would have been? What are some options that we may have for those students who really need it, but they just don't qualify, as you stated earlier? What options do we have for them?
Well, historically, we have allowed those students to attend. We've been very proactive in allowing second graders, third graders, even the fourth graders who are on that bubble to attend. When we started SOAR, we only allow kids that qualified to attend, because the kids who are on that bubble, they had an opportunity to go to SOAR.
Okay, thank you. And my final question for right now, I want to go back to math and middle, middle school math. I want to ask a question about that. I know when I looked at the chart, the graph that we sent, we scored below in 2018, and that was before we even thought of the pandemic. So looking at 2018 math scores, as well as where we are now, what have we done differently? Because this is not something that we see that occurred because of the pandemic. This is something that's been going on for some time, and just really a lot with our middle school math. What strategies or what are some things we're doing, and how are we helping these teachers? Because I know it's very difficult with math, period, and especially a lot of students just don't like math. So what type of resources are we providing for these teachers? I think you mentioned a little bit of training, but what other resources are we providing for these teachers? And then also along with that, what can we do to modify the middle school schedule where these students can have a math course, but also go back and get that refresher course in math? And I think it was called something in high school. Dr. Mack, you're sitting back there. What do we call the courses where students took a math and then came back?
Math seminar.
Thank you. What can we do in middle school? Because it worked for high school students. So how can we modify our schedule for middle schools where they can take the math class, but then also go back and have math seminar?
Okay, thank you for the question, and that's a great observation, Dr. Scott. We recognized before the pandemic that our seventh-grade math scores had flatlined. If you think back to 2018, the textbook that we were using at that time was called Digits, and it was a total online math curriculum. So when we got the opportunity, when the state approved funds for a new adoption, we had a, we have a very intensive process that our teachers go through to vet the books that the State Department has approved on the list. So when we decided, when the State Department allotted the money to the state, we knew that we wanted to go back to more of a traditional math textbook. And Big Ideas was the textbook that scored the highest from all of our teacher feedback. It is a traditional and also an online. We have a traditional math book that every student can be issued, every student can be issued, and consumable student journal, along with online resources. So that was adopted, remember, in the midst of the pandemic, in the late spring of 2020, when we were all at home trying to navigate an emergency learning situation. The Big Ideas book was chosen from kindergarten through eighth grade, and also into Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. So we have a continuum now of the same type textbook from kindergarten through several of our high school math courses. So we come out of the emergency closure, we went ahead and let our teachers know in June and July that Big Ideas was offering webinars and online training, and we encouraged those teachers to go ahead and attend those trainings to get a jumpstart on what this new textbook was going to look like and what it was going to involve. And many of our teachers did take advantage of that. Then we started the 2021 school year with our district in service, and remember, we get one day, and we had multiple sessions of Big Ideas with those consultants and those experts, working with all of our teachers. And one of the things we expected them to do was to attend at least one of those sessions. So we did that in August of 2020. We also offered repeat support in October of 2020, and both of those professional learnings, remember, was still virtual for all of our district, because we were still in Phase One of the reentry plan. Our content specialists, we have one math content specialist from middle school and one for high school, they are in schools every day, helping teachers navigate at that point in time, that new textbook. That is also the reason why I shared with you about the new three additional sessions for seventh-grade math. Our principals recognize, our teachers in the seventh grade recognize, since the seventh-grade math test is very different, as I explained, from sixth and eighth, we needed to be front-loading with our teachers the depth and breadth of those seventh-grade math standards. So we have that going on. And again, remember, I shared with you the theory to practice. We're now in Cohort Two, and we expanded that this year to involve all of our middle school math teachers, and continuing to focus also on our algebra teachers. So those are three big things that we have been doing since we have been looking at the data since 2017, 18. We are continuing to work with our teachers, encouraging them to link in with the online professional learnings that we provide. My team sends out a monthly newsletter. Each of the content specialists have a very rich part of that, and there's constant opportunities that our teachers can do on their own, outside of the school day, to get support. We recognize that three half-day sessions is not going to be enough to get us where we want to be. But it is a start, as we are in the midst of a school year, we are in the process of planning what can we offer this summer for teachers to be ongoing, so that we're not feeling like we're playing catch-up. For your second question, modifying the middle school schedule. To offer more time in math, we're going to have to have more math teachers. We cannot double-block math with the number of teachers we currently have. To double-block math, to double-block ELA, we have to have double in the number of teachers. We did look at some changes several years ago, but because of the number of teachers we had, we were not able to make any middle school changes in our master schedule. Of course, we do have interventionists at our middle schools, but I must share with the number of vacancies that we have, a lot of our interventionists have been pulled to go back into the regular classroom. But we do have those things on our list, we continue to talk about them. I would love to see us have more time for math, but again, it will require more staff.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I just want to, for those listening, want to point out that there's a common trend here with our online assessments, that we, one, I know that teachers feel as though they, our students rush through them and don't give their personal best on these online assessments. And also, it may cost less money for our state to do online assessments. So you can see there why there's this big debate about why we should have online versus paper. It takes more manpower, it takes more time to get the assessment scores back, and it costs money. However, with our elementary students and our high students, we see that our growth was better with paper assessment. So if you're advocating for that, and you're one that makes noise at the State House, please continue to do that, that we need these paper, pencil-paper assessments, so our students can use the strategies that we teach. We work a lot on strategies with ELA. They need to touch the text, write on the text, and so we need as many people as possible to advocate for this at the state level, despite the cost of, that they'll save by doing paper pencil. Also, with early childhood, I noticed that our third-grade students had a decrease in ELA. I just want to point out that that's also our kindergarten students that were online. Okay? I think that's important for everyone to see that, that those third-grade students were our kindergarten students, and when your ELA scores are low, you're going to see a difference in science, because those are big words. Okay? And so that's where I noticed that those trends were in there. It was due to a lot of the ELA that would place those eighth graders. And then I looked at that fifth-grade score as well, during that time where they were at home learning. So there's that ELA piece. Also, real quick, I'm sorry, I hope I didn't lose my train of thought. I'm wondering about our MAP scores. I heard Ms. Coleman talk a lot about how MAP related to our SC Ready and Pass. And I know that the MAPs, MAP results give you things that teachers can work on and on those RIT bands, and time needs to, you need time to be able to do that. One thing I would suggest is making sure that teachers don't have to go and pull those reports. I think those reports should be sent to teachers automatically in all grade levels for their class, when we do that, to encourage them to use those results when they're testing. Benchmark assessments, that's another test that I think we're using whole-school-wide or whole-district-wide, and I think it's great for our teachers to be able to create their own assessments using benchmarks, especially with the DOK level being high. However, when you enforce a district-wide assessment, it is another test, and one more that you have to squeeze in there, and use MAP results and benchmark results. And the only benefit I saw was the fact that the language in benchmark is high, so it gives them that practice with our hard assessments. But I heard over and over how that's a lot. If you're going to use MAP because it's a good reason, because of how it correlates with SC Ready and Pass, I didn't hear much about benchmark and how that relates. So it's just something to think about, and that's all that I had.
Couldn't catch the boss's eye. That's a very good observation, Ms. Porter, and I will say, we are giving benchmarks now as part of Proviso 1.86. It's a mandatory assessment that we have to give three times a year, or else the state will take ten percent of our EFA funding. Benchmarks is, you know this, because you've given them, they're a very different test. They're a criterion reference test, they are an enorme reference test. I will say that watching benchmark reviews and the way that that item analysis, which we don't have on MAP, it's really night and day. They're two incredibly different assessments. Now, we are only given MAP once a year. So we personally, I would love to be worked out of a job. I think we test too much, and I think accountability puts too much pressure. I can find something else to do. But at this point, I think we have really trimmed down assessment to the point that I would probably say, off the top of my head, ninety percent of what we're giving is either state or federally mandated. So a little bit of wiggle room, but we are giving just MAP once a year now. We give it to third graders in reading at the end of the year a second time. And I've tried to talk myself into advocating for eliminating that. However, based on what you just said, and I'm glad you noticed that about third grade, that second administration of MAP is a, it can serve as a, oh, the word escapes me, Mr. Newton, an alternative assessment to, for us to use for students who might be retained based on Read to Succeed in Third Grade. So haven't quite talked myself into advocating for the elimination of that yet, because I feel like the minute we do that, we're going to have a third grader who's retained. Good cause exemption.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir, thank you. So we have pared down testing just about to the bare minimum. But I agree with you, the benchmarks and MAP are two totally different assessments. I've only been here a year, but what I'm seeing in the schools is, our reading coaches, especially at the elementary level, they will bring that item analysis, the level of the conversations is so rich that we have. You know something we figured out? Elementary kids don't do well when they have a question that says, pick two. Elementary kids don't do well when you give them a thirteen-paragraph re, online reading, and then ask them questions, because they can't use that strategy of going back and highlighting. So they serve really different purposes. I want to touch on one other thing you said, because my little nerd antennas went up, and I really appreciated what you said about third-grade ELA. One thing that we've noticed is, when you look at the pandemic, you can kind of see three bubbles of impact, right? So if you look at our big kids, the impact with them was grad rate and dropout, and we're still struggling with that. When you look at those kids who are now in this group that we presented tonight, who are fourth to eighth graders, and even some of those ninth graders who are about to take that EOC at the end of this year in Algebra I, they're deficient in math. These are also national trends, by the way, which is very interesting to me from a research point of view. One thing we started seeing in our data last spring, from the itty, the itty-bitties, so that K one and two, they don't have that math deficit that we're seeing in this fourth through nine span, but they do have a reading deficit. And that created a sense of urgency in us and in the principals, and Mr. Newton presented that information, and the schools have presented it, and so we've got that sense of urgency on that reading. And you all know, having been teachers, that it's really difficult to teach reading, whether it was virtual, because we did have kindergartners on a device during the pandemic, or even when we had mask mandates, because it eliminates a lot of that, looking at the mouth. I don't know if anybody's been a speech parent, you know that when you're in speech, you're taught to point to your mouth when you talk to your kids. So we know, we're seeing some of those same trends, and we are addressing those with urgency, because we see those as well.
Mrs. Washington?
So I heard you say earlier that the benchmark assessments are aligned to our state standards. So how many benchmarks have we taken this year? Is it one so far? Is it per quarter?
Well, there's, we are required by law to give three a year.
Okay.
So far, in three through eight, we've given one. We've also, we give benchmarks in our end-of-course assessments in high school, and we've given one of those as well.
So what is the data saying so far? I know it's pretty early, but we have two more to go. What are the trends and what's happening?
So I think a lot of what we're seeing is similar to what was presented with the SC Ready data. Those trends on reading still being a concern for the third graders is still there. We're looking at those math concerns, and we feel like we're making that progress. It's probably not as fast as we'd like it to be. I'll tell you, one of the biggest things that worries me this year is attendance. If any of you have kids, small kids, big kids, in-school kids, there was an interesting meme on social media that it was a bingo card, and it had like RSV, cold, COVID, bronchitis, this and that, and it was like, what parent bingo have you gotten this year? Right? We've had a really, we've had a really interesting, said as I come back from having pneumonia, we've had a really interesting season of illness this year. And we know some of that is, as COVID restrictions are dropped, we're socializing more, we're not wearing masks. We have seen a rise in student absences this year. I have a big concern about that. Now, I'm not advocating to bring your sick kid to school. No, I don't want, that's not what I'm saying. But we do know that we're still having pretty high absenteeism rates in our schools. And so I worry about some of that when we're looking at benchmark data and where teachers are and where students are, and if they're missing school. Because you know, when you're following that pacing guide, when you've got high levels of absences, you know you can't stay on it, right? And our teachers, they work. They work hard to try to get back to where that pacing guide needs to be, but we know that we are seeing a high level of illness-related absences thus far in the school year. So you know, the really interesting thing in that data is that it always kind of seems to balance out as we get further in the year, as teachers kind of do their magic and get those kids caught up who've been out. But we're still seeing very similar trends thus far.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Mrs. McFadden?
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. Um, I know that last year we approved content and credit recovery for ninth through 11th graders, where they were able to go back in and study a specific area of loss of learning, I guess, or where they weren't getting it. Do we have that for math and ELA for specifically math since they're struggling for our elementary and middle school students?
No, we don't have content recovery for elementary.
Is there a way, I mean, for the math especially, um, that if they're, if you can see that they are not doing well in a subject, that they're, I know for, that would be for the report card, but just so that they could get more information and learn that before they go in and take that test?
Uh, we address that several ways. Um, we actually address that within the school day. The structure, for example, for a math class, it's just not whole group teaching. Um, when we introduce a concept or skills to the entire group, we do that. But teachers have data on students. So we build enough time into the schedule where they have what we call workshop. So the teachers will work on those students in flexible groups, small groups, um, to meet that need regarding their skills and where they are with standards. And additionally, as you are aware, we have our extended day program, which we also provide, um, extra, uh, instruction for mathematics as well as reading.
For the middle school as well, um, we of course are utilizing every instructional moment, uh, to provide extra support, whether it's tutoring during lunch, whether it's pulling a child out of perhaps a related arts class if they have missed something due to a medical absence or due to absence. We also have extended day for middle school, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, and we are solely focusing on math. It is from 3:45 to 5:30 on Thursdays. The first, um, 30 minutes, we focus on the map data or the benchmark data. What gaps do we have in our students? The next 45 minutes to an hour, we are focusing on the current math standards, uh, reteaching, whether it's with manipulatives, whether it's just a different way, whether it's just hearing it again. And then the last 15 to 20 minutes, we are providing, um, homework support in math. So for middle school, we recognize our data specifically, again, as Dr. Scott mentioned, way back in 2018, our seventh grade math continues to be a concern. So for middle school extended day, we made the decision with middle school principals based on our academic achievement to only focus on math.
So with that extended day program, those, that's a program where you actually identify these children and invite them to come and stay after school on those days? That's what?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's on Thursday afternoons from 3:45 to 5:30. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mrs. Nash?
Um, I do have a question, well, a couple. One, I just want to say first off though, you guys, thank you so much for all this data that you guys have done and thank you to all the teachers who are handling, uh, this rebound and recovery. Um, but yes, I have a question for the cost. Is there a cost for extended study? Okay, perfect. Okay. And then the other question I had, I know that you guys, um, said that we were kind of like in a recovery plan. Is there like a living document that you guys kind of go through? Um, so what, in that, would it be something where it says how many FTEs that you guys need for math?
Uh, we do have an academic recovery plan that the state mandated. Uh, we submitted that last summer and we had to update it again this, um, this fall as a matter of fact. Um, I do not have an FTE number off the top of my head. Uh, that is something that again, we're kind of looking at and it would vary, uh, school to school based on school population. Um, you know, EL Wright may need more than Muller Road because EL Wright is a larger middle school. Uh, but again, that is something we are looking at and we could have something, um, numbers for you later on.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Trapp?
Yeah, so we'd like to ask you just a couple of questions. Um, my daughter just finished her first semester at college and the one class that gave her great trouble was statistics. So I, I understand the math and I, I realize for a lot of our high school students, they're just, they're just behind. There's little we can do about that. Um, but, and most of the questions I had have been answered and y'all have done a great job at providing the information. Um, it sounds like the biggest obstacle we have is a lack of teachers. Would you say that's probably? Because it sounds like we have plenty of programs, we just don't have the, we don't have the troops here to get it done. Um, so other than us recruiting more teachers, uh, realistically, do you think that, uh, the rate we're going right now, will the, will the middle school children be up to college? Will they be ready for college when they get out of high school, you think? How, how are we looking?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Trapp. Um, yes, sir, I do believe they will be ready. I do believe our teachers work very hard each and every day, uh, to teach to the intent of the standard and to have our students ready for the next grade in middle school, for their high school experience, and then of course, whatever they choose to do beyond high school graduation. Um, our, we would love to have more math teachers, but I hope you all do recognize the number of math graduates coming out of our colleges are in single digits across the state. If you go to the University of South Carolina, they may produce five math teachers this year. And we've got, I think, 46 school districts or 46 counties. I forget how many districts we have now that we have consolidated. But even if we add additional FTEs, which I do believe we need, it's going to be a, a task to find those math teachers. So that's something we have to consider as well.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, and for, thank you all for this very thorough presentation. Where can the public access the data for just the meets or exceeds information?
Sure, there are multiple places that they can access that. Um, one, we did put that out in our press release, which was available on our website. In addition, um, the public can always go to the state report cards, which are published on the State Department of Education's, um, website, and that will have all four of the levels. Um, the state actually, when they report out, they do each individual level. They do approaches, meets and exceeds, and meets and exceeds. So they reported in all varieties and that is very easy, easy to access on the State Department of Education's website.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And my, um, final question, we talked about the data conversations, the visits with the schools and the, the school leadership and making SMART goals and talking about data trends and action. When we're going in and having these discussions, are we setting definitive goals with these principals or schools?
Yes.
Of what we hope to see next year with this information?
We work together with them based on that achievement data to develop SMART goals that are specific for that school. Yes.
So, but that would be definitive numbers?
Those would be definitive numbers.
Okay. And so do we compare from year to year, those numbers? And how would we get those numbers to see those numbers?
I don't know how actually to share those with y'all. Those, um, have been done by schools.
Is it something, information that the district collects or it's just been done individually at schools?
We have been collecting it and working individually with schools. This is the first year that we have set the goals such as we have.
Okay. All right. Well, we can talk about that later, but I was just curious if we were setting definitive goals. Thank you all so much. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, again to the team, thank you all so much for, uh, the, the great presentation around our data for elementary and middle schools. Just a couple of points that I wanted to, to button us up with as we transition, which was the first thing, which is the, the math curriculum at the elementary level. I think a question was asked regarding, um, our middle school math performance. Uh, one of the things I also want to highlight in addition to the digits curriculum was that at, at one point, we had multiple math curriculums taking place at the elementary level prior to going to one universal district-wide math curriculum. Uh, individual teacher was able to select his or her own math curriculum of choice. And so we may have had a fourth grade or a fifth grade classes of math, of students, uh, in two or three different math classes, um, taking or using two or three different math curriculums. Uh, this sounds innocent in his, in his, in his, uh, uh, application, but then when that student transitions to the next class, the next grade level, and that new teacher is using a different math curriculum, then it's not so innocent. And then when they transition to middle school and then they go into a situation where it's completely online with digits, it's a total mismatch, which I think created a deficiency in our mathematics. We, we saw this similar as a district. It's one of the reasons why we transitioned to the big ideas and asked for a universal math curriculum for everyone. Uh, we did the same thing in ELA and reading several years ago. And I think Dr. Scott and Ms. Agostini, one of our board, remember that when we moved our reading curriculum and decided to, uh, adopt one reading curriculum. And lo and behold, we have seen, uh, improvement in reading and ELA scores as a result of that because every student is now receiving the same curriculum regardless of which grade level he or she is in or if they transition, or I should say, transfer from one elementary school to another, uh, the curriculum will be the same. And I think that's important. The benchmarks, as we know, has, has always generated, there's a lot of conversations in our school district, uh, and particularly for our teachers. And, and, and we definitely understand the concerns, uh, that many of them express, or some of them I should say express. But there, I do want to highlight, there are several teachers, or many teachers in our school district that embrace the benchmarks as a way of giving them real-time quarterly information about how their students are performing on standards. Uh, the standards are, i- it's not just an understanding of the standards, but it's also an understanding of the intent, of the indicator of learning. And I expressed this before, a standard is very broad and covers multiple indicators of learning. Uh, I should be able to look at any assessment and determine what, or which, this question is measuring what indicator of learning for what standard. And the benchmarks allow us to be able to do that and now collectively gain information about all students in a particular grade level and how they're performing on an individual indicator and an individual standard, which allows us to then deploy the resources in support of those teachers on, uh, in holistically across the district for professional development. And so when you're looking at a particular indicator or a particular standard, the district now can see how all fourth graders are performing on a standard, how all fifth graders are performing on a standard. MAP doesn't give us the ability to do that because it's done once a year or it can be done twice a year, but it's not necessarily drilled down to the indicator of learning like a benchmark. And as addition to what I think Ms. Coleman shared, now the state is requiring us, uh, to, to, to assess, to do this assessment three times a year as opposed to waiting to the end of the year for the summative assessment results, which now that it becomes autopsy data and we're not able to address, and Ms. Coleman will appreciate this, what, what we like to term back in the, uh, early 2000s is, Dr. Coleman, is bunnies. These are the little things that we can address that will allow our students to perform better on these assessments. It's the little things that we need to know that we can make those corrections for those students. So I think that's important for us to remember. Uh, the extended day program, I think the question was asked about, is it funded or is it, does it, it doesn't cost the students, but we are funding this through our ESER, uh, funds. So I just want to make that clear. So it's of no cost to our students because we are utilizing the ESER funds for the extended day and, uh, our SOURS program. Now, I would say, I would love to see extended day, um, be offered more than once a day and my team knows that. It's smart because I've been asked, I want to see, I would love to see it done once a day. However, that's a tremendous financial commitment that we have to figure out how we're going to fund that, uh, once the ESER funds are depleted. However, um, there are options and ways that we can do that through grants, 21st Century and things like that. If we reshuffle or re-shift that and make the 21st Century programs also universal and uniform across, uh, the school district, which there's a model for that as well. Um, and so those are just a few things, um, that I, I wanted to just, um, kind of put a button on and highlight. Uh, again, great questions from our board. Thank you again to the team for a wonderful, um, presentation around the data.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you all for, um, a great, uh, very productive con- conversation and, um, presentation. Moving along, item 9.1, the draft agenda items for the January 10th, 2023 board meeting. Dr. Davis?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, you see before you the, uh, the Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 regular scheduled board meeting, the draft agenda with the call of order for executive session beginning at 5:30, where we will convene, call the board meeting to order and then adjourn to executive session. Listed tentatively on the executive session items, we have student appeals and breach of contracts, as well as employment recommendations and certified releases. We will have our public session will resume at 6:30. We'll have inspirational moment, approval of the agenda. We'll have the approval of the consent agenda, the public participation, voting on executive session items, uh, which would be the student appeals, breach of contracts and employment recommendations and certified releases. We'll have our highlights, uh, policy revision proposal for policy BD organization of the board. We'll have the update, um, for the 21, 22 assessment results for high schools as, as stated earlier, followed by the two, January 24th draft agenda, uh, our second public participation if needed, board and superintendent comments, and then we'll follow with executive session two if that session is needed and then voting on those items from executive session two. If not, we will go from our, uh, board and superintendent comments to adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board members, um, in compliance with policy BEDB, we are going to ask that you again send to us, um, in writing, three days prior to a board meeting, any request? We have quite a lengthy list of what you all gave us last week. Is there anything in addition to last, or excuse me, our last meeting that you want to be discussed or can we move on? All right. Thank you. Uh, moving along, item 10.1, there are no additional speakers for public participation, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, uh, which is board and superintendents, board and superintendent comments. It's item 11.1. I would like to ask the board to make a motion for board and superintendent comments to follow item 13, voting on executive session items. Could I get a motion for that?
Madam Chair?
Dr. Scott?
I'd like to make a motion that we move board and superintendent comments following 13.1 session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Any discussion or comments?
Just a quick interjection. I, I'm, I'm guessing, uh, just for clarification for the board, I'm going to imagine that you want to do board and superintendent comments after this 13.2, the student appeals, um, and not the 13.1 because it will come between the, uh...
Your assumption is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Davis, that is my error. I should have said 13.2.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. So this isn't an action item, so it won't be able to come up on the screen. I have the motion as I would like to make a motion that we move board and superintendent comments following item 13.2. That motion was made by Dr. Monica Scott and seconded by Tamika Washington. Can y'all take a hand vote?
All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Now may I get a motion to go into our executive, our second executive session, please?
I make a motion to, um, I move to recess public session and reconvene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott to convene in the second executive session. Excuse me. All those, sorry, forgot we had to vote on that one. I'm still new. Is there any discussion? Thanks for the little prompt. Okay. The motion is correct. Board members, please vote. It says up there that I'm not present. Did I push the wrong thing? I do not have a not present, um, as an option.
I see you as yes. I'm just waiting on Mrs. McFadden, Mrs. Washington and Ms. Porter. Are y'all, are y'all yes?
Can we do a hand vote for this? Okay, hand vote. Board members, all those in favor to convene into executive session, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The vote is seven to zero. The motion carries. We'll now convene in our second executive We'll now convene in our second executive session. Do I have a motion to reconvene in our general board meeting?
I move to end our second executive session at 9:54 PM and reconvene our board session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mr. Trapp to end executive session at 9:54 and reconvene in our general board meeting. The motion is correct. Board members, please vote. I believe you may be waiting on me. Is anybody else? I'm going to vote yes. I got kicked out. And the vote is seven to zero. The motion carries. Moving on to agenda item 13.2. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
I move that we deny the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second?
I second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter, forgive me for a minute, to deny the appeal for student number one. And the motion is correct. Board, please vote. Oh, any discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is five to two. The motion carries. Do I have a motion for student number two?
I move to deny the appeal for student number two.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter to deny the appeal for student number two. Is there any discussion? And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote.
Ms. Agostini?
And the vote is five yes, two no. The motion carries. Can I have a motion for student number three?
I move to send student number three to Blythewood Academy.
I second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter to send student number three to Blythewood Academy. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. And the motion, there are six yeses and one abstention. The motion carries. May I have a motion for student number four?
I move to grant the appeal for student number four.
Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a motion made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter to grant the student appeal. Board members, is there any discussion? And there's no discussion? Board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. And do I have a motion for student number five?
I move to deny the appeal for student number five.
I second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter to deny the appeal for student number five. Board members, is there any discussion? And there's no discussion? And the motion is correct? Board members, please vote. The vote is seven to zero. The motion carries. Moving on, we will go back to our board member and superintendent comments. Mrs. Washington?
As always, I would like to thank everybody for showing up virtually and in person for our meetings. I had the opportunity to visit high schools, and I want to say it's such an amazing time to see students for the, I think it's the winter day assemblies, and I can't wait to see more schools after the holidays. I also want to thank Dr. Franklin and Dr. Grant for connecting with me on last week. And please know that I'm going to continue to ask questions as I continue to learn my role and continue to learn more about the operation of our premier district. Also, in our session, I want executive session, I want the public to know that we had an opportunity to hear about the IG report, and I want the public to know that we take the report serious. We are going to continue to move forward and to have these discussions so that we can continue to stand out as a premier district. May God bless Richland too, and happy holidays to each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Porter?
I want to thank our students from ELRite that came out to sing for that inspirational moment, and thank you to all teachers and staff during this time. I know we're gearing towards the end, towards the holidays, so keep doing what you always do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Nash?
Well, I had the opportunity to go to Cube on last week and learn a great deal from a lot of people. And one of the things that they talked about was oversight and accountability for school boards. And so, I just want to stress that that was definitely one of those things that just gives you more energy to do what we do here. So I'm really excited to dig more into that, but also want to thank everybody that watched tonight, that was also in attendance, and thankful for you guys for coming. And all of you guys who are still here, if you're online, you don't see it, but there's a lot of people still here, thank you guys for what you do as well. And then to everybody, just make sure that you have a very joyful, a loving, and just a wonderful holiday. And we'll see you guys, I guess, in the new year. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. McFadden?
I just want to say thank you to everybody who showed up, again, like my colleagues have said, but I wanted to have a special acknowledgement of the passing of Mr. Henry Vincent Ford on December the 6th. He was a longtime community advocate for health care and education, and he's done a lot in Richland School District, too, and especially originally School District, one where he served for 24 years on the school board. So I just wanted to acknowledge his contributions to education. And I want to say thank you to everyone who is watching again. And basically, I had to step out today because I had a prior obligation, so that's why I was absent for a little bit of time, but I was able to make it back. So I just want to say thank you guys for everything. We'll look forward to seeing y'all soon.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mr. Trapp?
Yes, I'd like to especially thank everyone that came out tonight. I'd also like to especially thank our teachers and staff. I think we have some really good people at work here in the district, and we're very fortunate and blessed to have them. And as we roll into, as we conclude this year and look forward to next year, I really hope we can all work together to make next year the best year we've ever had here in the district. And I just really am grateful for the opportunity I have to serve with these fine people here. And I really would ask as well for patience as we learn our roles here. Some of us are very new at this, and it's definitely much different sitting here than it was right out there in the past. And it's quite a challenge, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Dr. Scott?
A lot have been said already, but I do want to acknowledge the time that I spent at the Cube Conference. And I had so much to say, but I'm so exhausted. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. But one thing I do want to say from that conference, we had one of the best speakers I've seen in quite some time, and it was the daughter of Archbishop Desmond Tutu. And she talked with us about a lot of proverbs, but one in particular that I want to leave with you guys, and then at the next meeting, I'll come back and share a little more with that. But her favorite proverb that she said is really abused a lot is, "A person is a person only through other people." I want you to think about that because I'm going to come back and elaborate a little more on that because it was very deep with the details that she shared with us, and I have all these notes. And I normally don't take this many notes when I go to conferences, but this was so powerful. So remember this proverb and go back and look it up. "A person is a person only through other people." And with that said, I want to just say thank you to ELRite course that came out tonight. Thank you to the team, the academic team, and Dr. Coleman who presented to us earlier tonight. It was very in-depth, so I do appreciate that. And to the faculty and staff of Richland, too, please take some time to get some rest over the holidays. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And hopefully, when you come back, I'm just going to do a little plug, hopefully you can come back to a nice bonus because we'll have an opportunity to go back and look at the finances. Because one thing that I did learn at the conference also, it talked about if you want to retain the best and the finest, then you have to incorporate bonuses. So that's another little plug that I'm going to put in. If you want to retain the best people that you have in your school, then you have to show them that compassion, that care, that love, and that money. So with that, hopefully you return back to a bonus. Everyone, have a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Davis?
I'm not against a bonus, but they won't have it when they come back in January because we need to, we would need to have a discussion about how much that's going to be. So probably the discussion in January will take place around budget season, right? So again, thank you to, thank you to the staff for an outstanding job on your presentations to the students at ELRite and their parents for coming out and blessing us with your, with your talents. We're so thankful and appreciative to have wonderful students and parents who support them and allow them to share their talents with us. Also, to my, to my team who presented today, again, thank you for a very thorough report around academics, and I'm very proud that we've spent a good, quite a bit of our schedule today, a board meeting today, focusing on students and learning. I would be remiss if I didn't quickly say, and just, and remember some shout out to my, speaking of grandparents, my nana, today was her, would have been her birthday. And so, I know she is watching, and I'm so thankful for all the lessons I've learned over the, over my time of being her grandson. And I want to wish all of our parents and teachers and administrators and everyone happy holidays, as has been stated. Get some rest, enjoy your families, take some time for self-care. Go ahead and schedule it on your calendar and pay for it so you'll do it. That's the only way you would get it done, if you go ahead and pay for it, if you can't get it refunded. So schedule it and take care of yourselves while you are out. And I also just want to say thank you to the board for an outstanding meeting, very productive, very business oriented, and we got a lot accomplished today. So thank you all for that.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I wanted to share with the public that as a result of tonight's conversation, as board chair, I will call a special called meeting in January to discuss the IG report with the board members. Also, Dr. Davis, you're going to find this maybe a little funny. Today is my mom's 84th birthday, so I was wishing her a happy 84th birthday, and then just wanting to wish everybody a happy holiday, happy holidays, have a safe and wonderful winter break. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Dr. Scott?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mr. Trapp to adjourn. Board, is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. All, all in favor, raise your hands. The motion carries seven to... The motion carries seven to zero. Have a great night.